For the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. All right, good evening, everyone. We will call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And we'll move on to item number three, which is public comment. Rory, do we have any public comment?
I have not received any.
And it looks like we have no public on the call. So we will move on to item number four, approved minutes from the June 16, 2020 regular meeting. Have a motion to do so.
Don't move Chris Bowen.
Trish.
Motion by Chris, second by Trish. Is there any discussion?
I have one comment, Kurt.
Al, go ahead.
Under our selectmen's public comments in the first sentence attributed to me, I said, it's been great to watch the curve get flattened, not the curb. So if that could be corrected to curve, C R V E, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Monica will make that note.
Awesome.
But it is fun to watch a curb get flattened, just for the record.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. Okay, item number five, approved minutes from the June 23, 2020 special meeting. Have a motion to do so.
So moved, Al Bruno.
Motion by Al. Second by Anne Marie. I just saw her raise her hand. Now that she's back. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Cheer votes, I motion passes five zero one. And please note Bob Finley's abstention.
Trish's abstention as well.
Oh, I didn't see that. Sorry. So that is four zero two with Bob and Trish abstaining. All right, under first selectmen's report, I didn't have a chance to do a formal report because I was tied up in meetings all day. But just with regards to the first selectmen's, or excuse me, with regards to the budget, our projected deficit is now down to about 60,000. That is including the potential of a $290,000 surplus payment from the Board of Education. Board of Education is also asking the town to create a reserve fund for them, which can be done through the statutes. We got that request letter. And I plan to put that in front of you at our next meeting for discussion. I just want to give Brian and the attorneys an opportunity to review that. I also want to get an understanding of the amount of funds that the Board of Education has in their surplus. So but again, we are heading in the correct direction, which is certainly very good. Also, on the 21st, excuse me, is our next meeting, I'll have a full update with regards to how tax collection is progressing. It has been relatively busy the first few days, so that is certainly a good sign of people paying taxes. So with that, we will close the first selectmen's report and we will move on to item number seven. Discussion to take possible action regarding 824 referral for Holbrook Road reconstruction project. So as you know, we have a three and a half plus million dollar project to reconstruct Holbrook Road. We are in the process now of finalizing all of the easements that are required by the state of Connecticut. We hope to have that done in the next week or two. A lot of the easements have to do with the town of Oxford. So that information was produced by Brian Lima, one of Brian Leclerc's partners. And that has been sent over to the town of Oxford. So we're just waiting for information to come back from them. But regardless of that, we still need to get 824 approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So Brian, is there anything you want to add with regards to that that I may have missed?
I know, Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Okay. So with that, I will entertain a motion that we forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Holbrook Road Reconstruction Project for an 824 referral.
So moved.
Motion by Bob Finley.
Second Bowen.
Second by Chris Bowen. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just one question. Is planning and zoning even meeting at this point? I know they hadn't been meeting for a while because of COVID.
Oh, they had not been, but we'll have them call a meeting to take care of and address this.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. Okay, item number eight, discussion take possible action regarding tax abatements for two pieces of property. One is at Eight Francis Drive. The other is at 36 Emma Street. So we will start with Eight Francis Drive. You should all have a letter in your packet from our tax office. This is the town of Seymour, per Tax Collector's deed, volume eight, excuse me, 584, page 736, recorded on May 28, 2020, is now the owner of Eight Francis Drive. Please abate the following delinquent real estate taxes for grand list 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019. Total amount, $1,159.20. The property was included in a tax sale held on November 12, 2019 with no bidders, and the redemption period of six months has expired. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Again, that's from Dana Flock, our tax collector. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to move Eight Francis Drive off the delinquent tax rolls for the years 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, as recommended by Dana Flock.
So moved. Trish.
Second.
By Trish, second by Bob. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Kurt, I have a quick question, Al Bruno.
Okay.
Is this for sewer usage fees, or is this for real property taxes?
This is for real property.
Okay, thank you.
As I understand it. Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. So the next one under item eight is B 36 Emma Street. And again, it is the same recommendation from our tax collector Dana Flock. She is recommending that we abate the following delinquent real estate taxes for grand list 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. The total amount is $1,075.82. This property was included in the sales, or the tax sale held on November 12, 2019 with no bidders, and the redemption period of six months has expired. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation from Dana Flock as presented.
So moved.
Move.
Motion by Al, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. Item number nine, discussion take possible action regarding the non-union salary memo. So in your packet, you have a memo to payroll from myself, CC to Doug Thomas, our finance director. We are, we, the board of selectmen, are required every year to do this memo as a procedural matter, as these are non-contractual employees. These are the increases that have been budgeted and approved during the budget process. So I'll read them into the record. They go into effect July 1 of 2020. Enforcement officers, $516 per week. First selectmen, $90,000. Director of Operations, $91,289. First selectmen's assistant or chief of staff is $62,171. The human resource director, $84,051. And the finance director, $126,004. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memo as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Bob Finley.
Second Chris Bowen.
Second by Chris Bowen. Under discussion, is there any?
This is Trish. I have a question.
Go ahead.
What's the salary and the job functions for the, what was the previous salary and the job functions for the enforcement officers? Is that blight?
That is, they do blights, they do zoning, and they do inland wetlands.
Do you know what the previous per week salary was?
Um, I believe they got an increase of 2.49%.
Okay. Is the work that they're doing, is, that's not full time, is that correct, Kurt?
Stipend position, correct. Nineteen and a half hours a week.
Okay, is, so on a stipend position on what they're working, is there anything that, are they reporting to someone to quantify the work that's getting accomplished, or how does that work?
They report directly to Jim Baldwin. And he handles their schedule and all of their reporting.
Okay. And he's satisfied with the increase based on the work that he sees is getting accomplished in that 19 hours for the, and how many enforcement officers are there?
Two.
There's two?
Yeah.
Is this, was this his recommendation, recommended increase based on their work?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kurt, who the, who?
Who's?
It's Anne Marie.
Oh, you froze.
It's the two enforcement, thank you. Who, who are the other enforcement, who the two enforcement officers? I'm sorry.
I think you said, who are the two enforcement officers? I think that's what you said. So it's Mike Marganski and Bill Peck.
There it goes.
Are the two enforcement officers. All right, so I think her question for the record was, who are the two, the names of the two enforcement officers?
And on the HR. Yes.
And then, what's your question on HR again?
How big of an increase was that?
2.49%.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so just to clear for the record, to make sure it came through, because you broke up a little bit, the two enforcement officers, Bill Peck and Mike Marganski, and the size of the increase for the HR director was 2.49%. And that is as his contract states.
A stipend position?
Stipend for which one?
You said it's in a contract for, to give an increase on a stipend position?
The HR director.
Oh, oh, gotcha. I thought you were still talking about the enforcement officers, because I'm still, I don't really believe on a stipend position, we need to provide an increase year after year. I think it should be looked at year after year based on the work that's getting accomplished and what's required of the position, what's needed. Same for hours, of course, but that's just my personal opinion.
They did not get an increase last year.
Okay.
So it's been a year and a half, I believe, since their last increase. And the last increase they got, essentially what we did was we took, they had money put aside for mileage and for cell phones and things like that, and they were putting expenses in. We kind of wrapped that all into one payment that was lower than what they were averaging. So it worked out, made sense for the town at the time.
So what they're getting paid is all encumbering of that, then? They're not getting reimbursed?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Very good.
Regardless, regardless of the number of miles, or the amount of miles that they drive, or how much they use their personal cell phones, that's on them. They get small increases to the stipend. I don't think we can actually use the word stipend anymore. But that's essentially what it is.
Okay, thank you.
And Kurt, just to be clear, but Jim Baldwin recommended the increase, right? That, because they reported.
Yes, Jim Baldwin thought it was appropriate to give them increases this year. That's correct.
Great, okay.
Okay, any additional comments or thoughts? Now, Brian, even though I'm technically controlled by ordinance, I should abstain from this, correct?
That would probably be appropriate, Mr. First Selectman.
Okay. Okay, so with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'll abstain. So the motion carries five zero one. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so we can all refer to the email, which you received from Rory Burke this afternoon. And I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda, discussion and possible action on resolution for Johnson Controls Energy Efficiency Project. I have a motion to do so.
Don't move.
Motion by Bob, second by Al. Just under discussion, we applied to the state of Connecticut. The state of Connecticut responded that they needed some updated resolutions. They need to have these prior to the cutoff date, which is July 10. So we need to obviously take care of this tonight. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion and take possible action on resolutions for Johnson Controls Energy Efficiency Project. All right, so you have three resolutions in front of you. So I will read each resolution into the record. There's no issue. The first one has to do with the high school in Bungay School. Said, whereas on September 18, 2018, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Seymour authorized the town to enter into a performance contract agreement with Johnson Controls for energy savings improvements to various town facilities and in the Seymour Public Schools. And whereas, the town and JCI amended the agreement to modify and add to the scope of work for additional project costs in an amount of $5,272,392 for a total project cost of an amount of $14,465,000. And whereas, on June 9, 2020, the town approved a further modification of the agreement related to the project to eliminate the roof replacement and the installation of solar photovoltaic at Seymour High School and Bungay Elementary School. Whereas, in conjunction with anticipated reimbursements from the state of Connecticut, the town desires to confirm the allocation of appropriated funds from the project to use these funds, which are $7,675,167, in order to update school lighting, roofs, solar photovoltaic, solar projects at Seymour High School and Bungay Elementary School. Be it resolved, section one, that the town allocate the appropriate funds for the project and use these funds in order to update school lighting, roofs, and solar photovoltaic, solar projects at Seymour High School and Bungay Elementary School. The allocation of these, these appropriated funds is as followed. Seymour High School, $4,647,679.70. Bungay Elementary School, $3,027,487.50. And section two, that the first selectmen is authorized to execute such agreements and other documents on behalf of the town for the project. And town officials and employees are authorized to take all necessary and proper to carry out the project. So can I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Moved.
Motion by Trish, second by Anne Marie. Just on discussion, again, the state just was looking for some additional clarifying language. We're also going to do two more of these that have to do with Chatfield Low Press, or excuse me, the Seymour Middle School as well. So if there's no questions or comments, all in favor of the first resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. The second resolution, whereas on September 18, 2018, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Seymour authorized the town to enter into a performance contract agreement with Johnson Controls for energy savings improvements in various town facilities and in the Seymour Public Schools. Whereas, the town and JCI amended agreement to modify and add to the scope of work for additional project costs in amounts of $5,272,392 for a total project cost of an amount of $14,465,000. And whereas, in conjunction with anticipated reimbursements from the state of Connecticut, the town and JCI desire to further modify and or reduce the scope of work to be performed by Johnson Controls pursuant to the agreement related to the project, including but not limited to the elimination of the installation of solar photovoltaic at Seymour Middle School and related energy savings improvements. Be it resolved, section one, that the town amended agreement with JCI for energy savings improvements in various town facilities and the Seymour Public Schools to modify and or reduce the scope of work to be performed by JCI pursuant to the agreement related to the project, including but not limited to the elimination of the installation of solar photovoltaic at Seymour Middle School and related energy savings improvements. And section two, that the first selectmen is authorized to execute a further contract amendment to the agreement, other agreements, and other documents on behalf of the town for the project. And town officials and employees are authorized to take all actions necessary and proper to carry out the project. I have a motion to approve the resolution as read.
So moved.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Bob. Just under discussion, initially, we did not think that the roof at the Seymour Middle School would be eligible for reimbursements. Through some conversations with the state and discussions with other towns, it has now become available. So we need to make these resolutions to make the appropriate changes to satisfy the state of Connecticut. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. And then the final resolution. Brian, is it okay that the first three sections of the resolution are the same? Do I need to read them all?
You can incorporate them into your reading of this, Mr. [inaudible].
All right, so as, as in the previous two resolutions, the first three sections are the same, so we'll skip to section four. Whereas, in conjunction with anticipated reimbursement from the state of Connecticut, the town desires to confirm the allocation of appropriated funds from the project to use these funds, $1,606,442, in order to update school lighting, roofs, and solar photovoltaic, solar project at the Seymour Middle School. Be it resolved, section one, that the town allocate the appropriate funds from the project and use these funds in order to update school lighting, roofs, and solar photovoltaic, solar projects and related energy savings improvements at Seymour Middle School. The allocation of these appropriated funds is as follows. Seymour Middle School, $1,606,442. Section two, that the first selectmen is authorized to execute such agreements and other documents on behalf of the town for the project. The town officials and employees are authorized to take all actions necessary and proper to carry out the project. So with that, I'll entertain a motion, or excuse me, we've already done that. So all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, you need a, Mr. Chairman, you need a second and discussion, please.
We didn't do that?
This one.
Oh, I apologize. All right, so at that point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as read.
So moved.
All right, so we had, I think there was four hands, so let's go with Trish and Chris. We'll keep fixing it up. So Trish made the motion, Chris, the second under discussion. I apologize, I thought we already did this. Nope, okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. This should do everything that we need to do, hopefully to have some positive approval from the state of Connecticut. We ran into some bumps, but we did reach out to our part of our state delegations. They represented Claire's Dietrich, and also her sister Themis. They had a connection with the folks who oversaw this project, so they made some calls and helped move this project along. So thank you to them for that help. And we will move on to item number 10, which is appointments. We have several appointments before us. And again, just before we take the vote, just to give a little background, we have a replacement for planning and zoning, Richard Peck. It's actually P E C K. So if you want to make the appropriate correction on your sheets. And Tom Schutie, Board of Assessment Appeals, they are both replacing elected folks who had to step down. And then in your package, you receive, you received correspondence from the Board of Fire Commissioners, excuse me, reappointing chiefs Lombardi, Edwards, and Van Wart for one-year terms that would expire on June 30 of 21. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments of July 7, 2020 as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Bob Finley, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 11, tax refunds and abatements. We're going to refer to the tax refund and abatement sheet dated July 2, 2020. And it's from Susan Bowen in our tax collector's office. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved Anne Marie.
Motion by Anne Marie, motion by Anne Marie, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes, I motion passes six zero. Okay, item number 12 is transfers. We have no transfers before us this evening. So we'll move on to item number 13, which is correspondence. We have a good deal of correspondence. We have, of course, the check registers for your review. We have a letter from the Board of Fire Commissioners, as I stated a few minutes ago, recommending the reappointment of our chief and two assistant chiefs. We have an opinion letter from town council, particularly Rich Paturla. There was some question as to the ability for the fire commissioners to reappoint the chiefs based on everything that's going on with the pandemic. So Rich provided an opinion on that. We have a resignation letter from Paul Wedowitz stepping down as an alternate to the Board of Finance. And then we have Governor Lamont signs executive orders to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. This is from the Connecticut COVID-19 Prevention, I guess we'll call them Task Force. So I wanted to provide these four or five pages for you just for your review and understanding. And then we have a breakdown of the executive order seven B B B, which was done by our attorneys at Birch and Moses, again, just to give us some updates on that. So that covers all the correspondence that we have received. All right, so with that, we'll move on to item number 14, which is public comment. Rory, has any public comment come in since we've started?
No, sir.
No public comment, and I see no public on the phone. So we'll move on to item number 15, which is selectmen's public comments. And we will go in order as you appear on the screen. So no fooling around with your camera, so you move. And we'll start with you, Trish.
Why, my screen shows Al first.
Well.
I see the screen shows you first.
But it's okay.
You're right up there, Trish. See where my finger's pointing? You're right there.
Thank you.
Al's over there.
It's okay, I can handle it. I just want to publicly state with the state. It's okay, I can handle it. I just want to publicly state with the state of the nation. What's taking place is, I don't believe there's any, we're a diverse town. And I'm not sure, I'm sure the town is doing something, but I want to make it abundantly clear for anyone who's appointed to a committee. Elected to a board or is working for the town, that we're not going to fool around with. Anything that's being posted on social media. They need to be very, people need to be very careful about perception, because it's everything. And I will publicly support the removal of any individual from a committee board or from a paid position. If anything is posted. Directly, indirectly, intentionally, unintentionally, that's going to offend any member of our community or others. And that's really all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Al, you're next.
I have no comment tonight. Have a great week, everybody. Enjoy your summer.
Wow. I just need a moment to compose myself. That's never happened before. Okay, so we will move on to Chris Bowen.
Hungry.
Al, you know you don't have to lean into the camera when you talk.
I know, I feel like an old gal.
I enjoy it.
I feel like my age.
I always know when he's going to speak, because he starts to lean in.
I just want to note that I have the one screen up above where whoever's speaking, it's the little thing that's closest to the camera. So when Al comes along, it's like, boom, right there.
Yeah, it's all. Like, what was that guy named? Yeah, oh, nightmarish, here's a word. So Chris, you're up.
Be safe, be careful, and be kind.
Alright. Anne Marie?
Oh. We still have a few weeks before the governor gets us into phase three with the, with the COVID. I just want to say, I'm very proud of our Seymour residents for doing their part in wearing the mask when they go out and keeping the numbers down. Bouncing that thing all the way down, so hopefully Seymour and the Valley has no more hospitalizations, no more new cases. Just want to say, I'm proud of Seymour, and I'm proud of the public works. Saw them out mowing the grass this morning and picking. Up the debris on the entrance and exit ramps along Route 8 in Seymour. Very cool.
Yeah, and to follow up both those points, you know, I just got an email, or it's text, I should say, right before we started, Seymour had no cases again. So I believe we've had two total cases in the last two and a half weeks. Which is a positive, and I know you all received the report that Jeff sends out every day, and that curve has definitely been flattened. Which is a great thing. So to, Anne Marie, to your point, I think everybody just needs to continue to do what they're doing, be a little bit more patient. And I think we're going to hopefully get through this on the other side. And, you know, in talking to a lot of my peers, they struggled with parks needing to be reopened. Because they had not been paying attention to their parks. So they just kind of left them to the side, and they were scrambling around. That was not an issue in Seymour. As soon as the decision was made to open the parks, they were ready to go basically the next day. So. You know, congratulations, or kudos, I should say, to Tony and Frank and Jordan and the rest of the guys at Public Works. They've done a fantastic job. Maintaining our parks, keeping them, them ready to go. So that is, that's a point well taken, Anne Marie, so thank you very much. And Bob Finley?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick shout out, the food drive that happened in June, very successful. $1,500, went to the food, food bank, sixty boxes of food. It was a great event. I'm glad that everybody turned out. This town always shows up and does a great thing, you know. Everybody just chips in and does, does great things for this town, so it was great to see.
Yes, definitely.
Stay safe, stay safe.
It was nice of the community center folks to kind of spearhead that project. They got a ton of volunteers. We had a bunch of members of the Board of Selectmen. Show up with their families, which was great. I actually got my kid down there, which is near a miracle. To do something, because, you know, he's quite possibly the laziest person on the planet, but great to see him down there, so. And to Bob's point, ton of food, which was great. And the food bank folks were extremely grateful, not only for the food. But also the monetary contributions, which gives them a little bit of flexibility to go out and get some specialty foods. That sometimes they don't get through donations, but now they can provide for, for their customers and folks in need, so.
Can I just add, Kirk, because I, I forgot, I did speak with someone who works with the food bank at the community center. They're also very grateful to be given the larger space. Considering the pandemic and their ability to spread out a little bit more. What are the chances that they're going to be able to keep that space long term?
Um, that by, by contract, that area is available to the Boys and Girls Club. So once that operation starts back up, they're probably going to have to move back inside. Unless we can make other accommodations with the Boys and Girls Club. So.
Wanted to double.
Something with.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to double Chris's point. It was their last Wednesday. I'll be there tomorrow. That extra space is a lifesaver. I'm going to tell you that right now. They need more space.
Yeah, it's, we'll have to work through the contract issues. And we'll see what can and can't be done, but, you know, in the same token, the Boys and Girls Club is bursting at the seams. They need the space as well. So what this tells us is that we need to build a new community center. That has been kind of put a little bit on the back burner while the pandemic and things are going on. The biggest concern is, our discussions on building a community center was based on a very complex and elaborate. Way of financing it. And I don't want to take this town down that road until we have a good understanding of the financial impact of this virus. And what it's going to have on our tax dollars. That being said, I did spend about a half hour today on the phone with the folks from the. The Central Connecticut Coast YMCA. They are the ones that manage the YMCA and Sonya. As we know, that has been closed and will not be reopening. They are potentially looking for other spaces to develop, to partner with, to what have you. A new YMCA, so I wanted to let them know that Seymour was extremely interested in that. And if they wanted to consider partnering with us, that's something we would discuss. I also have two developers in Seymour who would be interested. In building mixed-use developments around a project like that. So they were going to go back to their development committees, kind of run it up the flagpole, take a look at the two properties. That I said might be of interest, and hopefully we'll hear from them in the upcoming weeks that they may or may not have interest in Seymour. So I think it's, it's a good thing, but to that point, we definitely need more space for our projects, and that would be a great thing.
Depending when the Boys and Girls Clubs open, it would be nice if we start considering if there is any larger space for the food bank to use. If it's still going to be required with the pandemic, looking to extend possibly through 2021. So, thank you.
Well, any, and I'm not saying this to be fresh, but any suggestions anybody has would be greatly appreciated, because we. You know, there may be things that we've never thought of, so if you have an idea, please don't hesitate to shoot it along. Because we are trying to move people around and fit everybody in as best we can. Now, in fairness too, with everything going on. Perhaps the daily usage at the Boys and Girls Club may go down. We don't know what's going to happen, so there could be the potential where the Boys and Girls Club said, says yes for the time being, go ahead and keep using that room. But we'll see how that looks as we get closer to September with the start of school and, and everything else. So. So with that, are there any other comments? Rory, is there anything we've missed?
No, sir.
Sir, Brian, anything you'd like to add?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, so with that.
I'm making a motion.
Anne Marie makes a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Trish threw the hand up. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Mike, Mark's meeting closed at 7:43. Have a great night. Everybody stay safe and healthy, and we'll see you all in two weeks. Give me like.